Sometimes we can present the screen to the TV.
Okay. That's weird.
Because, as I said.
Messed that voice. Do you want to get a 154? Does that have Bluetooth on it? See, because you can hear. And it says if that was a Bluetooth TV, you can connect it on Bluetooth. If I move here, it can let it show up.
So you have Bluetooth?
Yeah, if that has Bluetooth, you can show up here. And you can connect it to. I don't know if it has it. It's a smart TV. It's a smart TV? It should be.
That all councilors are here except Counselor Waterhouse, Counselor Marshall Neely, and Counselor DiLorenzo. We're going to wait just a little bit as we do have a public hearing that will be starting soon.
That's happened. Why we have this big party.
Party?
The big party in March. You don't know what happened.
That wasn't for me. I didn't say that. It was somehow came up from my television. You could disregard. Please disregard.
Do you know Putin?
I already are thinking so.
This is Tom Bloomfield, Melissa Public Hearing. Bloomfield Town Council will conduct a public hearing on Monday, January 14, 2019 at 7:55 PM in council chambers in Bloomfield Town Hall, 800 Bloomfield Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. For the purpose of soliciting public input regarding proposed ordinance on veterans' tax exemption. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town manager and town clerk office. Date of Bloomfield CT, Thursday, January 2019, in the Alvis Center Conference. First person up is Calvin Pittman. Would you like to speak, Mr. Pittman?
Yes. Speaking on that ordinance?
Yes, sir, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Your next, David LaMenza.
Yes.
Can you go through the microphone, sir?
Good evening, one and all. I got a question for you. On this proposed ordinance or action, will have any effect either negative or positive on the existing program the assessor has on reduction of assessed value on houses for veterans who are disabled?
What was your question, sir?
Will this proposed ordinance or action, whatever you want to call it, will have any effect either negative or positive on the existing program for veterans who are disabled who receive a reduction in their assessed valuation every year from the assessor?
Well, it's my understanding that the state statutes allow for the municipality an enabling statute that will allow the municipality to reduce the assessment on the property based upon the disability of the qualifying veteran. The veteran has to go ahead and fill out the appropriate paperwork, provide the reminiscent evidence of the disability and so forth. And the assessor takes that into account in reducing the assessed value of the structure that the veteran owns or lives in, so.
I understand that. I participate in that, okay? My question is, does this proposed ordinance have any effect on what you just said? Either positive or negative?
I don't know how you. Are you participating in the $1,500 assessed reduction?
I think mine is either nine or 10,000. I'm 100% disabled.
Okay, well, it shouldn't have any effect on yours whatsoever.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
So could we just reassure that answer and make sure you can look into it and get a definite answer? Because what I would hate to see happen is that this piece of policy have that negative effect and affect him, and then he's coming back to this council saying, "You told me on January of 2019 that it's not going to have an effect on me."
Well, the ordinance for you this evening is one of permissiveness. It permits the town and the assessor to reduce the assessed valuation of the property. It's nothing in here that disqualifies anybody or would require an increase in the assessment. It's basically following the Veterans Administration and state statutes in terms of allowing for a reduction. So it's permissive in that sense. It's not the, you know, punitive.
Yeah, there's also, it states in here in the ordinance that will allow a total exemption for residents with respect to veterans who receive assistance or special housing under Title 38. Now, I'm not sure whether that overrides the gentleman's concern and says they can totally remove it, or that these two may become different. I don't know.
Well, Title 38 is a lengthy statute which outlines all of the details of the Veterans Administration's qualifications and disability limits, both partial disabilities all the way to a full disability and whatnot. So this is taking that into consideration because the state statutes refer to that and incorporate it into the state statutes in process for approval. So the individual would have to apply and go ahead and.
The individual would have to apply and basically provide the paperwork that's necessary to show that he or she has a disability under the provisions of the state statutes and the ordinance.
But they could comply for 100%?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
I also, there is also a 3%, I believe, that I know I get. It's been there forever, for non-disabled veterans. And I thought a few years ago, we were authorized to double that, and we chose not to. But it's also an abatement on taxes for all veterans.
All right. Seeing that there's no one else on the list.
Let's remove. Second?
To close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. We will resume our, sorry. We will resume our agenda. Citizen statements and petitions? None? Okay. A report from subcommittees, Community Service, Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening. This committee meets on a quarterly basis, and the next meeting is March 12 at 6:00 PM.
You can also do Admin and Education?
Yep. So Admin Education met on January 14 at 6:30. We had over the monthly report for Human Service Facility, Public Works, and Zone and Light Enforcement Progress Report. Human Service Facility, the construction project is currently on schedule, on budget. The building is scheduled to be enclosed within the next few weeks to continue ongoing construction efforts during the winter season. And that's it for the Human Service Facility. A Public Works facility, the construction project is scheduled just for. The foundation has begun for the maintenance in the building, and the structural steel installation is currently in progress. Zone and Light Enforcement Progress Report. Its staff's report, receive a monthly violation report and citation issued during the month. There has been an increase in zoning compliance. Request for real estate transactions during the last quarter of the year. And Micah Sellers currently, or should be working with our West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District to come up with some better processes and check whether or not we need to update some of our ordinance in place to make sure that we're being impactful. We also receive a status update for everyone at home and here. Everyone has a gooseneck mic tonight. We usually have the current mics that we shift around. We also made some upgrades. We have outlets currently now in the dices. We also have a new monitor to the right. It's not functional right now. We're still waiting on a part. But once that's up there and working, everyone at home will be able to see any presentation that's being displayed here in the council chambers at home. So you don't have to come to a meeting if you don't want to. You'll see everything from home. HD. Thank you. The next report is on to Old Business, a discussion and status update regarding the Tobacco 21 Bloomfield with the West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District. We receive a brief status update report regarding the revision of a town ordinance, Chapter 18 and a half pertaining to the Tobacco 21 Bloomfield raising the legal age of retail sale of tobacco and notice delivery system to persons 21 years and older. Mr. Yulet also provided a list of recommendations and consideration in developing a draft amendment to the town ordinance for Chapter 18 and a half. So we're currently going through the process. I think in February, we're going to receive a rough draft from Steve in regards to this and open the debate whether or not we want to move ahead with this ordinance. I know myself, the mayor, and Councilman McCleary attended. The West Hartford District had a meeting on this topic. It was mainly around the various vaping, that's varying vaping equipments that are out there that are affecting our young children. And it was a very lengthy conversation. I know Representative Derek Slapp is heading that from the West Hartford side of things. He's going to be championing that in this session. I think it's important for us to get it off of the street. So there's no more update from that. But we're going to also reach out to our representative here in Bloomfield to see if he could also do something, Mr. Bobby Gibson. We also receive a quarterly report from Human Service, from the Director of Human Resources, providing a second quarterly affirmative action report, diversity report for the town of Bloomfield. She also submitted for review an organizational chart that the committee is currently reviewing and will get back to the council and the public at the next council meeting. And that's the end of my report, Madam Mayor.
Finance, Counselor Goff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. The Finance Subcommittee that was meeting that was supposed to be held December 17, as I mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, there was a good chance it was going to be canceled due to conflicts, and it was. So our next meeting will be next Tuesday, well, a week from Tuesday, January 22. And there will be two presentations. We will be looking at the results of the fiscal year 2017-18 audit, and we will also be getting an update on the town's debt capacity. So both topics, I think, are topics that hopefully citizens are interested in. And I would urge everyone to attend the Finance Subcommittee meeting next week. Thank you.
Committees on Committees and Land Use and Economic Development, Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Land Use and Economic Development Committee met on December 18, and we heard from Goman and York, our economic development consultants, on the subject of tax increment financing, which is a tool that we're looking at as a way to finance public improvements and encourage economic development through anticipated increase in the property taxes of a development from day one to day 20 or 30. The difference between the value at the beginning and the value at the end can be extracted and used for bonding purposes, and it would not be beholden to the citizens of the town. That is the bonding. These would be revenue bonds. So the discussion will also continue at our next meeting, which happens to be tomorrow night. And hopefully, there will be a recommendation forthcoming to the council soon, not too distant future. We also had a discussion on the renewal of the 50-year lease that town has with the State of Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection for Reservoir 2, which is out there near Seaberry Development. 50 years ago, the town got into this agreement, and now we're having to look at it again. So we're weighing all the pros and cons to consider releasing that property. It's not a great deal of money, but there are some responsibilities and some costs to the municipality to service that area. There are also some people in the town that use the area, including Seaberry residents and a private airplane club. So we're still in negotiations with DEP as to see what is totally involved, whether or not we should back out of the lease, let them assume the responsibilities that we have in the past. So that's also coming up for some consideration. There have been continued talks with DEP. Hopefully, there'll be a recommendation by the next council meeting. The committee is also looking at deliberating on the state pilot program to engage in land value taxation. This is a different concept than taxation policies we have now, which are based on improvements on the land that value the improvements. And land value taxation tends to value the land as more important. And the reason why is that under circumstances where you have property owners who under-improve their properties, or property owners who don't maintain their properties, there should be some penalty. The land under which that improvement is should have more value, and therefore, it should encourage the owner to keep up that value. If it deteriorates, he still gets taxed higher, so he's not making any money. It's a concept that is used in other parts of the world. It's a demonstration project. We're still trying to figure out if it makes any sense to use in part of Bloomfield. It wouldn't be a total townwide initiation. It would be a demonstration project anyway. So that is another area that we are looking at to see if there's ways of improving our tax situation. So again, I said, our next meeting is tomorrow evening. We'll be discussing these items, also receiving an update on the implementation of our comprehensive plan of development, which was passed in 2012. It's midway through its term right now, and we're trying to determine what has been accomplished to meet the plans, proposals, what hasn't, and what are priorities that we need to focus on. So that's it. And there was a Committee on Committees did not meet, has not met in the month of December, but will meet this Wednesday night. There are a few positions on town boards and commissions that need to be filled, and we'll be taking that up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council Business? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Public Safety, Counselor McCleary.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met tonight, this evening, in Conference Room 5. On the agenda was the communication systems. Major important item on the agenda was the communication system. And the captain provided an update with three alternatives to what we possibly can do. The first alternative is for Bloomfield to partner with Windsor and be on Windsor's core, with Bloomfield having three towers. The second alternative is for Bloomfield to join forces and be on the core for the state, and for Bloomfield to have a prime site, communication site, and having two to three towers. And then the third option is for Bloomfield to stand alone and host all the towers. The consultant, Tusa, has directed Molarola, Molarola, excuse me, to go out and get some pricing, simply because two of the options, they are the vendor. And so it makes sense for us to have them provide prices for the three options. And we should have a report back by the end of January to be placed on our agenda for the council and the subcommittee to hear on February 11, which is our next scheduled meeting. Also, the fire departments, the center in Blue Hills, provided reports to us. There's only one major thing that's standing out to them, and that is the auto accidents, I guess because of a high volume of traffic. And so we'll be on the lookout for that as the Public Safety Committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council Old Business, 1516-85C. Discussion and possible action regarding the Alvin and Beatrice Wood Human Services Facility project.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption for this ordinance. No, no, I'm sorry. Move adoption of the correction for discussion purposes. Let's see where we are. I think we're going to see the video. I have a second then.
Okay. So can we see the video?
Yes, Virgo, ATV, give us 330 Park Avenue project. Do I have a motion?
I don't care.
Okay?
So the video is not working.
Discussion.
Not sure. I wanted to add to that motion.
Okay.
I think we should be doing this on my favor, the ATV, but we also have other needs. And I would like to broaden that a bit to let the building committee look at some of the other needs that we have for extra space. I think going from a 90,000-plus square foot building down to a 50,000 one leaves us short of any extra space in town. And the town hall is relying on, the town hall is relying on the space in that building for lots of different things. It serves very well. And I would like to see us work in some flexibility with space. And I think we also all realize that there's no way that that new building is going to cost us. Well, we started at 30 million, went down to 20 million, and we're now at 23, I believe. And I suspect we're going to have some increased costs. So I think it would behoove the building committee to look at this with a broad scope and try to allow for more square footage than just what they might need for VATV. And without going into a laundery list of some of the uses. But I would like to see you add, consider the option of maintaining part of the present building rather than just adding new square footage to the new building. Even if part of the old building is renovated to new, that would save us 30 or 40% per square foot. We have a usable building we are now. Whether we renovate it now or not, at least we should think about not knocking it down right away and keeping a little bit of flexibility going. And for that purpose, I would like to open that, add to the change that the building committee should also consider the option of maintaining part of the present building, providing more space. And also, I think there's, well, I believe in that for now.
Anyone else that wish to comment on that?
Well, I guess I'm not quite sure whether that is.
We have a resolution to add VATV, and that's, do we choose to add to this as, Mr. Merd, or do we remain as is with what has been presented?
Certainly. Well, I just don't know. You've raised some very good questions, but they don't come with any immediate answers. And I would simply say that it would be my recommendation to leave it as it is. It's clean, it's cut. Because I don't know what the, you know, on resolution implications are with respect to your specific request. And I thought initially that the, my understanding is that they were going to. And I thought the initially that the, my understanding is that they were going to tear down that building, so I, I'm not even sure how that would even impact the whole project, notwithstanding leaving space open. I think the project, I think the ground council's report didn't indicate that there was five percent that could be added to the space, and what numbers were used with respect to that five percent, be it the aggregate or be it the aggregate less the common space. I think this is sufficient space.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I don't know. Is that a family of members?
Well, we do have a member of the Building Committee here. Mr. Burman, would you care to comment?
I'm not sure what the question is.
Mr. Merritt is suggesting that part of the existing building be maintained and used for others' uses.
As I remember the bond resolution itself, and as I remember what the, they told you, you council members as well as us, the Building Committee, we do not have the authority to renovate or do anything to the existing building except demolition under the bond resolution as council passed and put on the ballot and the voters approved. That's my recollection on that issue. If the council wishes to, outside of the bond resolution, the twenty-two million, three hundred thousand dollars is authorized there, to add money separately from council funds or from town funds to renovate part of that building, that's a separate issue. And that's not something this Building Committee, under the current bond resolution, has the authority to deal with. If you wanted to expand our charge and we're, and we're willing to put money with that, I suspect that the, the legal council might say that's acceptable, but I don't know the answer to that. That's a legal question. What I do know definitely is we, under the existing bond resolution, we don't have the authority to do anything to the existing building except demolition.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. Mr. Rivers, I think, in the original layout for that building, there's a space allocation for B A TV, and I don't think it was ever satisfactory in terms of the number or the square footage that was being allowed for that, but I think that was in the original layout. And, and so the discussion had been whether or not we have adequate space. That's one area. Now, to save space, to allow for storage or whatever the case might be, I don't think that would be covered in the price of construction of the building. We're going from ninety-plus square feet to fifty-two, I think it is. In that building, if you walk through it, there's so much wasted space in that it was never designed for that in the first place. So, to look at the numbers in terms of what, what we're building versus what's there, if you could walk around the building, you'll find that, that there's a lot of wasted space, and the idea now is to construct the building allocated for the departments that are there. And each of the supervisors have already expressed what they need, how much space they need, and that's basically what the bond has said. So, I think that's where we are right now. I, I don't think that we could look at anything else in terms of saving money to do anything because it's, it's been allocated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivers. Mr. Merritt?
I, I have been through many Building Committee projects, and very few of them end up with one referendum, for one thing. And we all know that this is going to probably need more money anyway. So, somehow, whether we go back for another update referendum or, or what, I am just saying, and the Building Committee is in no way restricted by the bond issue. It's only restricted by the charges. And so, whether it comes out of a change in the bond issue, the bonding referendum, or whether it comes out of the town coffers, I, I just think we ought to try to end up with the best thing for the town at the best cost, and, and that should be the objective, not complying with the, the bonding. And I, I think we do have a need for more space, and we have a need for more money. So, the combination would lead me to believe that we should not, we should open up the doors to further discussion by the Building Committee, for them to lead us to what would be the best building for the town, or combination of buildings. And that's why I said I wanted to at least open up that option for them to discuss. But that's my only point, because we're not determining the end result, we're just opening up the possibility of discussing it.
Deputy Commissioner?
I think we're talking about apples and oranges. First of all, what Mr. Burman was talking about, and Council Rivers was talking about, and perhaps what you're talking about, is to make sure the Building Committee can consider in its allocation of space four walls, the ceiling, the floor.
Madam Mayor, this is a point of reference. How long are we watching this? Or is there a point that we could fast forward to? Is that bad?
That being dedicated to B A TV.
Why are we watching?
Yeah.
So, just, just for some updates, there was a meeting that was held in March of two thousand seventeen, and the council minutes did not reflect the actual motion regarding item fifteen sixteen dash eighty-five C. Discussion and possible action, talking about the B A TV portion of the new building. So, it has been requested that this council, which is a brand-new council, which most of us wasn't there at the time, to amend that, those minutes. And in order for us to be able to amend those minutes, the only thing that we have is that tape, right? So, if the counselors have reviewed the tape previously and are comfortable making a, a, a vote on this item, I am all for that.
Madam Chair, I...
I was there, and my memory is very definitely that the, the...
B A TV.
B A TV was intended to be included in the charge. And I think you were there too. I mean, there's no question to me, I heard the bathroom politics on it, and there was no question that it was supposed to be included.
Okay, so we have two counselors who are verifying that that was supposed to be a part of the minutes for that meeting. So, can I please have a vote? All in favor of amending the minutes from March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen regarding fifteen sixteen dash eighty-five C? All in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sixteen seventeen dash fifty-one. Consider and take action regarding an eight twenty-four referral to the Town and Planning Zoning Commission and discuss possible action concerning the acquisition of real property.
Madam Mayor, a suggestion here that since this item is also coming up in executive session, would it be best, it seem, may it be best if we hold off on this and move it to the end of the agenda after executive session, so we get the benefit of the discussion with the attorney?
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussions?
Can I get some clarification from the town manager why it was on the agenda in the first place?
Okay, the property in question is the property that's adjacent to the golf course. Okay? And the town attorney had recommended that this be put on the agenda because all acquisition of an interest in real estate or property has to be referred under state statute to the Planning and Zoning Commission under section eight dash twenty-four of the statutes to see if it's in conformance with the town's comprehensive plan of development. So, this particular item on the agenda would simply send this to the T P C for their review and concurrence.
Is, is there any, Council McClary?
What, what this, this, the town is acquiring this property? Hoping to acquire this property?
I think there'll be discussion in executive session whether or not we want to move ahead in acquiring the property.
So, maybe it'd be more appropriate to deal with this after the executive session?
That was the, that was the motion that was...
Yeah, that's the motion that David.
Okay. So, any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? We will discuss this item after executive session. Seventeen eighteen dash thirty-nine. Discussion and possible action regarding including Bloomfield in an act permitting municipalities to impose a buyer's fee on the conveyance of real property.
Madam Mayor, I would move to endorse this concept. As you know, back in March of this year, this council submitted to the DEP a similar statement of support to be part of a proposed project whereby conveyance, taxes, the town will be allowed to charge additional one percent, up to one percent, and there's a deduction for the amount of real estate value. And the intent here is to provide funds to the community for parks, recreation, and playfields, maintenance and upkeep and stewardship. There's no, this is a holder, placeholder concept. If we sign on to this, if we say we're interested, does not mean, has no val, no real value other than to say, it, it shows to the legislature who will be discussing this that there are towns who are interested. If, if they go through and actually establish the legislation, then they'll have to come back to the towns that had signed on, and the towns then will have the opportunity to really get into the weeds to see how, how appropriate this might be. So, I think there's a reason for us to move forward again as we did once before and move adoption.
I would second that discussion.
So, now we're discussing.
Madam Mayor, I would move to amend this, a motion to refer this item to Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee, the Finance Subcommittee, Economic Development Commission, and the Conservation of Energy and Environmental Committee for further discussion and review, because I don't think we, we had this discussion or view on this topic, and I think it's, it's imperative that we do so.
Do you have a comment?
Getting used to the new microphone system here. I think that the concerns that have been expressed are, are adequate. The one reservation that I would have concerning moving ahead with this, and I think it was brought up a year ago, or almost a year ago when this was considered, is that if this does go forward and Bloomfield is selected and the town council then decides to impose a buyer's fee on property up to a one percent, this could be a negative reaction to Bloomfield's real estate market. I know some may disagree with this, but on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, you'd be paying, the buyer would pay, not the seller, an additional two thousand dollars. So, the question is whether this would depress real estate sales in Bloomfield, add an additional burden onto the, either the purchase or the selling of property in Bloomfield. In the past, when the state has moved ahead to put a conveyance fee on the transaction of real estate, they have made it mandatory across the state. And I would think that rather than creating differences in, in such fees between towns, that, that if such a conveyance fee is needed for the purchase of, for the purposes outlined in the statute or proposed statute, that perhaps it should be made mandatory rather than discretionary. Certainly, there are some communities I know in the state that would prefer to have very little or no development and, and would really be looking for the extra funds to purchase property in those communities. Certainly, that might provide an aura of a positive environmental-focused living condition standard in the community. But on the other hand, when you have buyers and sellers that are looking competitively at neighboring towns, it would be just as easy to buy a property, perhaps a desirable property, in Windsor, or West Hartford, or Simsbury, or Windsor Locks, and not have to pay the, the one percent conveyance tax. We did approve this last year. It is optional, but I'm anticipating that if Bloomfield wants to participate in the program, it could put a, a burden on Bloomfield's both buyers and sellers.
Counselor Merritt?
If my memory serves me, and I'm not sure it ever does, but didn't we have a conveyance fee that built a fee that was paid, a tax that was paid by somebody leaving, selling real estate in Bloomfield?
There, there is already a statewide mandated, I believe it's half of one percent conveyance tax.
But didn't we have a larger one in Bloomfield? Didn't we have a larger one, like two percent? We are one town that...
I don't believe there's authorization allowing for that. There is the state mandated conveyance tax, but there's not an optional one that I know of. This is an optional one, assuming the legislation's introduced and approved and signed by the governor.
Madam Mayor?
Counsel Golf?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify a couple things about that, because one of, one of the issues with this, and I, I certainly understand, a couple people have said, why, if, if this legislation were to pass enabling towns to, to potentially apply a conveyance fee up, up to one percent, so there are lots of ifs in, in here, but if that happened, why are we applying that to the buyer and the seller? The reason for that is there are currently two conveyance taxes on sellers. There's a conveyance tax that I, that is you, that is across, that is a state conveyance tax where the funds go to the state. There's also an optional, and I think this may be what Counselor Merritt is referring to, there's an optional conveyance tax that municipalities can also impose on sellers. I don't think it is forced to be used for land conservation, and I believe the number of towns currently doing that is something like nineteen. Then there is the mandatory thirty-dollar charge on real estate conveyance, which goes to fund the Community Investment Act, that's on the transit, you know, that is paid for by, out of our records department. There is currently no, no optional tax of any kind on the buyers, so that's in fact why the folks writing, you know, contemplating this legislation did look at, did look at the buyers. I just want to make one other comment here, because the prob, the problem with this is I think every point about this is completely valid in terms of, is it a posi, if you were to do this, would it be a positive or a negative? Do the, do the effects on the real estate market outweigh the, are those, do they outweigh, are they outweighed by the effect potentially of having better stewardship and other source of funds? The real issue is that we, you know, we're nowhere near that point. The issue here is this is an option, that what we came up with when we talked about this before. This was, this is an option that town, the towns who sign up for this could have, if it passes the legislature, and I for one, and I think last time I specifically said this, because I think I was the one who introduced the motion, I had language, and I believe it's in your packet, introduced into the minutes, which made it clear that, and I won't bother reading it, but I think we should add that again if we do pass this, made it clear that by passing, by signing on to this legislation, this in no way indicates that the town of Bloomfield is ready to put this in place. It just gives us another mechanism like that optional fee for sellers. So, with that said, I will...
Counselor Mann?
Yes, thank you. As, as, I, the words of our town manager are, are still ringing in our ears, and I think he's absolutely correct. There are things that we have to look at before we decide whether this is right for Bloomfield, and it's entirely possible that in the deliberations, the state legislature will come to the same conclusion that this has to be a statewide opportunity for all towns instead of a few. We don't know that. The key thing is, is this, is there enough towns to sign on to this, at least as an optional phase, to move it through the legislature? And at that point, the discussions, I think the deputy mayor is quite correct, it needs to have a lot of discussion. But at this point, it would just be wasted energy because there isn't a bill, and you'll be just using a lot of staff time to go around and talk about something that doesn't quite exist. These are the kinds of things that we'll have to deal with if, if this bill moves further. I think it just says something that provides us with an option, as, as has been previously said, and... said, and unless there's an unwillingness on behalf of my colleagues to engage in an option of this sort, to show some interest, I mean, I would, I'd propose the resolution. I think if everybody votes it down, that's the town's choice. But I think there's another time to deal with the issues that are involved here.
Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, to that point, everything else that I've heard here tonight, so I don't see what's the rush to move ahead and make this resolution if there's a lot of uncertainty. So, I stand on my point to refer this to committees that we have in place that could actually come up with some sort of clarity on all of the various items that have been outlined here tonight as far as their concerns. So, I don't see what's the rush. Unless someone can tell me why we're anxious to move ahead with this tonight, we should just refer this to committee for further discussions.
So, we have a motion after the discussion. I'm assuming that there will not be a friendly amendment?
I'm assuming there's no deadline on this.
That's my point, so why not?
No, there is a deadline. Raised bills are due in the legislature, I think for this committee, on January 20th. So, we, if this bill is raised without Bloomfield being on it, then our choice would be, our only choice would be, after we get all the feedback from these committees, to try to get ourselves amended on to the bill, which is a possibility, but it's going to be much, much more difficult than simply the request, the way this is being worked, is we are supposed to ask our legislators, legislators, legislatorsors, I would assume since Bobby Gibson is the representative for all of Bloomfield, currently we do not have one state senator that would go through him, is simply to add, you know, for the town of Bloomfield to ask the legislators...
We do have a state senator.
We have one, but I don't, no, I know, we have one, but we don't have, it could be, it would probably be both, I guess, but we don't have Beth Byron, I, you know, we have all three.
Just, just once again, I haven't heard anything tonight, why we should move ahead with this, where it could have a lot of implications to our taxpayers here in the town of Bloomfield and businesses. So, once again, I would plead with this committee to refer this to the various boards and commissions that have outlined a few minutes ago.
Okay, I'm going to let Councilor McClary speak, and then I'm going to call the question. Councilor McClary?
I have a question for the proponent of this bill. Does...
I don't think this is a bill.
Well, this ordinance or resolution, whatever you want to call it, a draft ordinance or a draft resolution, is it, if we pass this, does this commit us to accepting the program? So, I would suggest, just so we have the possible option to be included, because to get something amended, once it's a raised bill and not a committee, is very, very hard on the floor of the House, from our knowledge of the legislative process up there. So, I would just suggest that we just, you know, if we're interested, if this is something that we're interested in, put our names out there. It doesn't commit us to...
So, are we, are we interested in doing this?
That's the, that's the question.
Okay, so, so I'm going to call the question. Councilor Mann made a motion to go ahead and sign on to this proposal. They were seconded by Councilor Goff. All in favor? One, two, three, four. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash, I would like to make sure that the letter that we are going to be sending does state that Bloomfield... It will have the verbiage where that this is an option for Bloomfield, it's not something that we are going to do. I think it's extremely important that we make that clear. So, the verbiage that you talked about, Councilor Goff, that was in the minutes, will be a part of the letter. Eighteen nineteen dash zero four, consider and take action regarding ordinance on veteran tax exemption. Is there a motion on the floor? Councilor Merritt made the motion. Is there a second? Councilor McClary seconded the motion. Is there any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash thirty-nine, consider and take action regarding tax refunds. Is there a motion on the floor? Councilor Mann made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor McClary seconded the motion. Is there any discussions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just one comment, oh, well, two comments. One comment is that on the, accepting the list of, of tax, tax refunds, the very first item should say 2017 MV rather than MS. That's just a slight correction, because we're voting to accept the list. And I just wanted to note to people, it's in the information, but the United Bank, Kyle Spencer, is the wall systems refund that we talked about last time, but it must come through the tax assessor. It also here includes the fire department tax that was part of it. So, with that, I just wanted to add that clarity. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash forty, consider and take action regarding a one-time gift to the Bloomfield High School football team for their championship paraphernalia. Is there a motion on the floor?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second. But I just want a question when we get to the question.
We haven't gotten to the question.
Is there any discussions? Councilor McClary?
What is the amount of the gift? And where is the source of the gift coming from?
I think based on the conversation yourself and Councilman Goff had with the coach, I think it's roughly around $7,000, based on the emails that I've seen. It's either six or $7,000, I think.
So, I can provide accurate information if you give me...
Sure.
My, I would, Madam Mayor?
Councilor Goff?
Yes, I would think that the issue here, though, is that the council should not just approve, you know, a, you know, some nebulous number. I think we should approve some number not to exceed some amount, whatever that may be that we would agree on. So, whoever made the motion, I would encourage them to add an amount. Thank you.
So, could we put up to $7,000?
I think it was seventy-seven or seventy-eight hundred, so maybe round it to eight thousand.
Yeah, I think, I think eight thousand would be done well. Yep, eight thousand.
Councilor, Councilor Merritt?
Madam Chair, I had a number of questions about this, like, did somebody talk to the Board of Education of whether they would share in this? And shouldn't we be doing this? Are we approving something without a policy in place? Are we going to give gifts to all, any championship teams?
So, this is a one-time gift to the football team. A part of this is also coming up with a policy to donate to booster clubs, but that's a whole different situation than this one-time gift.
Well, I, we've been, I've just been through this so many times, where we suddenly have everybody coming in and wanting money for this kind of thing. And I mean, I think it's great that they did it, but I just think you need to treat everybody with an even hand if the, if the, I was going to say, the women's football team came in with us, but I think...
If they did, I would definitely...
I mean, you can have, and we've had several championships of various sorts, and I just think we need to be fair with all of them and treat them evenly. And also, have we, have we, I haven't heard any response to the question I had, have we talked to the Board of Education? Will they match what we do? Has everybody talked to the Board about matching what we do? Why should this not come from the Board of Education? So, I'm, I'm just saying, there's a lot of history of this, and there've been a lot of problems with it in the past.
Councilor DiLorenzo?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's working, right? Thank you. I mean, I, I fully support doing something for the football kids, the championship, but I, I'm inclined to agree with Councilor Merritt. We don't, first of all, the Board of Ed, or the athletic department of the Board of Ed, they should be also stepping up and saying they will match whatever we're saying we want to give as a one-time, or we split this one-time gift. And lacking a policy, maybe this should be delayed until we refer to administration, education, and develop a policy, then bring it back to council and act on the policy. You know, again, we can't just keep giving to every group that comes before us who wants some kind of funds. And I just, you know, I think it's great that we have a lot of champions, a lot of championship have been won, but at the same time, why, you know, I think seven thousand or eight thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. I mean, how many kids are getting something, and what's the exact amount of what it is that they're getting? I just think, I think that without a policy, giving a one-time donation or a one-time gift from the town council, without any input from the Board of Ed or the athletic department...
We have input.
Should not be done.
We have input from the athletic department. Councilor McClary?
I just recall that this is the first group that came to us in fourteen months requesting additional money. I don't see any problem with rewarding our kids who worked hard, who brought very positive media to the town of Bloomfield. We fund more things than this. We take property off, off the market for parking, which is $200,000, right? We don't have a policy for when we go in our reserves, but because people are very passionate about parking for the golf course, we can do that, and we're talking about doing that, but we can't give $8,000 to kids who work hard. Where's the equity? I think we called a question to vote to give these kids $8,000 and send this to admin and administration to develop a policy for the future. I think we should invest in our children.
I agree with Councilor McClary on that.
Councilor Goff?
Yes, I, I agree with Councilor McClary in terms of, the thing, I would like to see the motion amended so that we do send this to admin and education to develop a policy, which is what you said.
Well, it is, it is, it is a part of the, that it's going to go to admin and education. Right, so there is a secondary part of the motion to send it to admin and education to develop a policy going forward. Tonight, however, we need to make a decision on giving a gift, so I'm going to call the question.
Wait, one question, one answer?
Yes.
Could he amend his, his motion to add up to $8,000? Because we have to have a number in there.
Okay, so there's a friendly amendment of adding up to $8,000.
Not to exceed $8,000.
I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, we also didn't declare where the money's coming from.
It's coming from the council contingency.
And what's the balance in the town council contingency fund?
The town manager?
I don't know exactly, but you do have enough money in there. The contingency was $300,000, $200,000, excuse me, dollars, and the largest one was the roof settlement claim on Crestview for, I think it was $92,000 and whatnot.
So, can I, oh, sorry.
Madam Chair?
I'm going to call the question.
Let me just make sure I understand the motion. It doesn't say one time in here, and it, and we also want to add the up to, not to exceed.
Okay, so can you go ahead?
That's the amendment. Did you get that by any chance, India?
What's up to?
Correct.
So, are we, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
I thought Councilor Merritt had another...
I was, I'm going to call the question. We've been, we did this back and forth thing, so I was just calling the question.
Don't be trying to vote against us.
Okay, so, all in favor again?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Eighteen nineteen dash forty-one, consider and take action concerning grant easement to Eversource at 330 Park Ave. Is there a motion on the floor?
Move adoption, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Any discussions?
My discussion, I think, is appropriate, is that if we don't do this, we won't get power to the...
Well, with that bit of information, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we're going to have a financial report.
Essentially, I don't know, Kevin, do you want to comment on the December Councilman Goff? I can do that.
I will let you, I was not prepared.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie.
Carrie's like that.
Yeah, that's Jim used to report on the...
I'm sorry, you were hidden behind, I didn't see you.
December.
December, we have it presented to the, I haven't presented to the committee yet, or, I remember.
November, November.
No, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Carrie, maybe I can go over it. I think, I think the key things in the financial report on the revenue side is that our tax receipts are tracking pretty close to where they had been last year. The one area to keep an eye on is building permit fees. That's a, an area where we had reduced it from the prior years. There's some question whether we're going to make this year's budget. The building department and building official feel that there's a good chance that we'll have a significant number of significant projects coming in for permits this spring, but the, there's still a chance that we may not meet what our budget target was. Our budget was $950,000, and we're running quite a bit shy of that. I think on the revenue side, state grants are coming in. We have not had the same problems we had last year when the state government was having problems setting the seventeen eighteen budget, so we're okay in that particular category. One interesting item, and it really relates to the December report, the heirloom flat apartments were sold for $61,500,000, I believe, and that generated an extensive conveyance tax outlay. The town received over $300,000 in conveyance tax revenue from the sale of those apartments. Those apartments are, been, been sold to a third party, and we anticipate that the next phase of the apartments will be moving forward probably this spring or summer. That's across the street here from the town hall. But that, it does affect our finances, and I think you should be aware of that, but that will, you'll see that in the December report at your next meeting. Are there any other questions on, one other thing on the finance report, and I was going to bring it up under the town manager's comments, is that we did have our rating call with Standard and Poor's last Friday, and we, or, excuse me, a week ago Friday, and we did receive a slight improvement in their comments concerning our strong financial management practices, and they particularly cited our debt policy and some of the other policies that we put in place recently. They did renew our, our bond rating at a double A plus. This is Standard and Poor's, which is what it was before. We were always hoping to have it upgraded, but it was not, not upgraded. So, we're now moving ahead with our bond sale. Those bonds will be sold this Thursday. If there are any Bloomfield residents, I would suggest you call your, your broker or your retail financial advisor to see if you're interested in possibly purchasing any... interested in possibly purchasing any Bloomfield bonds. We'll be selling $12 million in general obligation bonds and $7 million in bond anticipation notes. I do want to comment specifically, though, on our finance director's performance with the rating committee up in Boston at Standard and Poor's. She did a great job. Jose Guiner, our planner and economic development director, did as well, but I wanted to let you all know that Carrie is new, and these opportunities come along only once in a while, and she did a fantastic job with the committee. So that completes my report on the finances.
Counselor Merritt?
May I ask a question about that? I think that's the 2% conveyance fee I was talking about. It adds up. 2% of $61 million comes out about right, so that's -- that is something that I don't believe other towns have the same fee. So anyway, I'll talk later about that.
All right, yeah, to make sure you have that information correct, because the town manager's saying that you're not correct, so you guys figure that out offline. Report from our town manager?
Yes, I think to move things right along, I was fortunate enough to be able to participate in another Bloomfield Today, BATV half-hour television program this past week with our town engineer Jonathan Thiesi, and I would urge all of you to watch it on BATV. It will give you a play-by-play, 25-minute update on all of the various capital projects that are going on in Bloomfield, everything from the town green to Philly Park to the MDC's progress on Woodland Avenue with their sewer repair, and some of the things that are coming up this coming year in terms of MDC projects on Maple and the year after on Mills. Also, as reported earlier, the human services facility project is both on schedule and on budget at this point. The public works project has also started to move along now, site clearing and even concrete in the ground. But if you have an opportunity, I'm sure BATV will be rebroadcasting the Bloomfield Today program that was recorded last week, and that will give you an update on many of these capital projects where there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you. From the mayor's report, just letting everyone know that the town manager's search has started. Our executive search firm was here a couple weeks ago and met with key staff, met with the community, actually. There were quite a couple community conversations. They weren't very well attended, but some people did come out, they did ask questions, and they were able to give some input on what they thought our next town manager, the skills they thought our next town manager should have. They were also able to give input on what a wonderful town this would be for anyone to come and be a part of us here blooming in Bloomfield. So that process has started, and we're hoping that we can hit Mr. Schenck's date of March at some point in time when he would like to leave, but we're going to hold on to him as long as we can. Don't tell him that I said that, but that's what we're going to do. We're also in the process of starting an organizational study. The firm has been selected, and they will also be meeting with key staff and, I believe, some members of the community. So please, if the notices come out to have meetings, please come out, please lend your voice to the conversation. That's the only way we will know what your thoughts are before the Monday morning quarterback started. Oh, we should have, oh, we could have, why didn't we? It's important to be at the table, and we're inviting you to please take part in this process. I'm going to remind us that we do have a community kitchen at the First Congregational Church on Saturdays, I believe, starting at 11:00 a.m. About, I think it's about 11:00, and it's open to the public. If you are in need, please come out on Saturday. The food is amazing. The atmosphere is very warm and inviting. If you are in need of any kind of assistance, please call our social services and speak with Camilla Halian or anyone that answers the phone. I know it's getting cold. It's finally feeling like winter, so please, if you need services, please make that phone call. There will be a few services on Monday in honor of MLK Day. There will be services at the Bloomfield United Methodist Church on Sunday at 3:00 p.m. There will be a service at the First Cathedral on Sunday at 5:00 p.m. If you're interested, please visit one of those locations. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 10?
So move. Second.
Any discussions? Counselor Goff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have three corrections I would like to enter into the minutes.
Okay.
So in the public comments--
Do you want to just submit--
I will submit those to India.
Okay, so can the motion be amended to accept with corrections?
Yep, accepted.
Motion has been amended to accept the minutes with corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, Madam Mayor. I was absent.
Counselor DiLorenzo wasn't here. At this time, we're going to have council comments, and I'm going to start with Counselor McClary.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say Happy New Year to our residents. I guess this is our first meeting back from the holiday break, and I hope everyone had a blessed and enjoyable holiday with their families and friends. Recently in the news, we saw a good story about specialty housing, some new projects, about 38 units is going on Cottage Grove, and I'm excited that that project is moving forward. However, while over the break, I was looking at the plan of conservation and development, and it talked about our 10% mark by, according to Connecticut General Statute 830G, where we focus on making sure that we hit that 10% mark, and if we don't hit that 10% mark of affordable housing for middle-class families, then that opens us up to have someone come in and ask for an exemption, whereas our zoning laws may say for every acre, you may have a certain amount of units. I just want us to be mindful, because we had so much housing rentals going up, and I want us to be mindful for moving forward, that we are focusing on affordable housing for middle-class families and ensure that our seniors have affordable housings as they get older and as we become an older community. The need for a five-bedroom home or a three-bedroom home decrease, and they need, you know, something smaller, and as we all know, as they get older, they don't have as much resources to upkeep their houses, and then that affects the neighborhood. So I just want us to be mindful of that, and I just urge us to, you know, over this next year, focus on making sure, maybe that's a conversation for economic land use and economic development, to make sure that we're focusing on affordable housing for middle-class families. And that concludes my remarks.
Counselor Goff?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I just want to make one comment. I am glad there are some Martin Luther King events. I did want to mention some interesting coincidences, because that will come up next week between this and our next council meeting. I just finished a very good book that I would recommend called A More Beautiful and Terrible History: The Uses and Misuses of Civil Rights History by Jean Theo Harris. I urge everyone to read this book, because it gives a very vivid view of the work of huge numbers of people in the civil rights community. It was not a simple struggle. It was a long struggle with organizing. There were lots of groups that are not hailed as the, you know, not as well-known as the icons, the Martin Luther King Juniors and the Rosa Parks of the movement. Very good book. The other interesting coincidence is she dedicated this book to one of her teachers, Julian Bond, and today's Julian Bond's birthday.
Hmm.
So it was just an interesting coincidence, and that's my council comment for tonight. Thank you.
Counselor DiLorenzo?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I think 2019 is going to be full of activity, and a lot of things will be going on, so please continue to watch and see all the activities that take place. So again, just now that, as the mayor mentioned, the cold air, the cold winter is upon us, please do remember the Bloomfield Food Bank and the Bloomfield Fuel Bank, and please be generous and kind to your neighbors. So I hope everyone has a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Thank you. That's it for tonight.
Counselor Mann?
Well, I don't want to be the Grinch by not saying Happy New Year, but Happy New Year, I guess. Couple things. This morning, we had a meeting of the Bloomfield Center Business District, and we were treated to an update of our Civic Lift program. It's an application that you can put on your computers, your phones, that provides all information of all events and activities and things going on in the town of Bloomfield, and it's been around for now almost eight months, and it takes time to improve it as time -- with additional inputs, and we're also getting more businesses to sign up on it. So be aware of that, Civic Lift. Also, I wanted to comment on our -- the community kitchen reference. I did attend the First Congregational Church for their Christmas meal serving with a number of my council colleagues, and it was a very rewarding experience. People come there not only for food, but just for familiarity and fellowship, and that's the way the church is operating, and it's something that goes on now. I understand it's every Saturday. The church is really expanding its role in this capacity. Another group from that church is ABC Alliance for Bloomfield Children. Meet over there. They meet here. We meet with them. We're having a meeting on the 24th with the town council. This is a group that's trying to promote ways or improve life for young children of all kinds and all conditions, and they're very passionate about what they do, and we're very fortunate to have them in town. So if you have a desire to want to volunteer or hear what else is going on, I suggest you attend one of the events at the congregational church or attend the ABC for Bloomfield. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will also start by saying Happy New Year to everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season, like I did, spent some quality time with the family. I also would like to say that we do have a budget session that will begin in March 14, and I think it's important for everyone to come out and be involved in the process. There's a lot of, like, stay here tonight projects on the table, so it's very important for us to hear from you, what are the things that are important to you, to be a part of that process. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Counselor Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to -- I guess I have to say Happy New Year.
You have to hear.
Yeah, can't be, it doesn't hurt. I'm also looking forward to Martin Luther King's birthday. I don't know why, but I really do. I like the songs, for one thing. But also, I really would like, and I'd also comment about the food bank that the golf club, men's club, has doubled their last year's pledge to the food bank, so that's good. But my -- the point I'd really like to make is the last building that we haven't fixed up yet. We've gone through all the school buildings and most of the town buildings. That is the library, and the library is half the size of what it needs to be to provide the kind of services that Simmsbury, Avon, Farmington, West Hartford, Windsor all provide, and they are modern libraries. We are not. We are way behind, because we just don't have the space to deliver the kinds of services our library provides, and you just can't do it. Doesn't have the space. And so the need to double the size of it is urgent, and we need to -- we're doing a number of things, like we're making sure that when the bond issue happens and we start spending money, that it doesn't up the milli, that we fit it in as other debt service drops off. This kind of fills in and continues on, because we have, as you know, many other things happening. So, but time goes by, and there's so much to be done, there's a need for us to get this rolling, and to get it rolling, we need to have a building committee reactivated, and we need to -- and the mayor's just assured me that in her next administrative meeting, she's going to deal with that, and that we need to just tell a process of educating everybody all over again on why it is we need that, and this council needs to get up to speed on it. And so there's a number of things to be done. So it's not something that's way off in the future. It's something we should be talking about now and get the discussion, get everybody's ideas out. We've been through a lot of this historically, but we need to bring it up again and go through it again. We've already got the parking lot secured, which is a big deal, but we need to go on from here. Thank you.
Happy New Year, right, because I guess I have to say it too. I'd like to thank those of you who came out. Once again, I think it's wonderful to be able to watch the meetings at home in the comfort of your own home, but it's also good to come out and interact and be a part of the meeting. So for those who took the time to come out tonight, thank you very much, and you took the time not just to come out, but to come out and stay. One of our residents was already here when I got here. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Counselor Goff talked about the civil rights and that it was a long process. It really was, and we're still fighting, even today. We are definitely still fighting. What's to say in young people? Stay woke. The event on the 24th that's cosponsored by ABC is a cafe conversation on race, where there'll be talking about unconscious bias. Most of the counselors, I believe, will be there, so I believe it's a public meeting, I think, because most of the counselors are there. But this is so important, especially in 2018. Sad that it's still as important, but it's even more important. So we need to continue to have those conversations, and we need to recognize that the struggle is real and the struggle isn't over. With that being said, we're going to go into executive session, where we're going to have a presentation and overview of labor contracts. We're going to discuss concerning pending claims and litigation. We're also going to have a discussion concerning possible acquisition of real property. In our executive session will be our town manager, our assistant to our town manager, our town attorney, Mr. Mark Needleman, and attorney William Ryan, and the HR director. Is there Cindy?
[inaudible]
I know, but once we get in there. Do I have--
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.